Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to the River Falls Council meeting of August 24th. This time we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I am the President of the United States of America. I take very well into consideration stance on the nation, our data, and that it is all that the regulation has to struggle.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here. Okay, get that done. Next, we'll have approval of minutes from the August 10th workshop and regular meeting minutes. I think we have an amendment here, clarification that was handed out. That would be part of those, part of that approval. Looking for motion.
Mr. Carroll, I have moved to approve the minutes as a seal.
Okay. Right, first and second, Christie?
First by Odine, the second by your step, all in favor?
Aye. Alright, next we'll move on to approval of bills for Mr. Carroll. Excuse me one second, I'm talking about Dr. It's all swan. Mr. Council President and Council, I submit approval for payment of bills at $747.79 and 99 cents subject to the Council and Control. Second. Okay, Christie?
Respect, Carroll, a second, I'm done. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, next we're on a public comment. We'll mention that the council did receive an email from Mr. Hanson today. So that was considered public comment, I think, as well. So that was in place. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything else on the agenda or otherwise that they'd like to address the council? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Pierce County Health COVID update from Pierce County Health Director, A.C. Snyder. I think what we'll do first is we'll start with her presentation and then as a public comment, we'll go probably down the council line here. See if there's any questions or any comments that people have. So, I'll turn over to Health Director Snyder.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me back. Disappointed, honestly, that I, that I have to come back here today. I thought and hoped that we were going to be in a very different place this fall than we are now. I was not going to give a formal presentation because I know you have a very, very busy agenda tonight, but I did submit a presentation to your carpet. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding what I've submitted or other topics. Very briefly, Delta's here, there's, there's no question about it. The patterns of outbreaks in cases that we've seen in our community are telling us that the Delta variant is in Pierce County. The Delta variant is somewhere between two and three times more transmissible than the wild strain. It produces 1,000% higher viral load in the average infected person. We have seen that about 2% of our cases since January in Pierce County have been breakthrough cases. So those that have been fully vaccinated, that have contracted COVID-19. It will likely increase as cases increase in Pierce County. So that's something that we should be aware of, that because Delta's here, even for vaccinated people, very focused. We are currently experiencing outbreaks in long-term care facilities in Pierce County. We've gone many months without having such outbreaks. And we have also began to, begun to see outbreaks in school-based activities, though not in River Falls School District yet, thank goodness. We, in Pierce County, are lagging behind the state when it comes to the number of people vaccinated for COVID-19. Right now, of all Pierce County residents, 47.4% have at least one dose of the vaccine. Our lowest age group is 18 to 24-year-olds. They are vaccinated with at least one dose at only 25%. When we look at the community served by the River Falls School District, so that would incorporate both parts of Pierce and St. Croix County, not only those that go to school, but the entire community that School District serves, they're at 52.7%, which is better than the counties, that's promising. But when we look at pretty residents alone, so that's a smaller number of people, it's just about 50%, it's at 49.9%. Good news is that we received formal FDA approval on Monday of the Pfizer vaccine for people 16-plus. This is yet another signal that the vaccines are safe and that they are effective. We hope that this will further encourage people that might have been on the fence to consider speaking with their doctor about getting the COVID-19 vaccine. There was also an announcement by Governor Pierce on Monday regarding an incentive program for people that are vaccinated with their first dose by Wisconsin provider, which we now have. I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Sure. So, what I was thinking we would do as a council is maybe just start with Mr. Plunkett. We'll go way down to this, I'll go last. And we do have a fuller agenda, this is a topic that we don't want to hear about. So I would ask that we are respectful of each other's time. So, if it's alright, Mr. Plunkett, I'll start with you if you want to.
No, thank you, thank you. Talking there.
No, we don't want that motion.
I do understand that I do have a number of questions, but was the issue with this made any political wise? First off, how long have you been aware that Delta would be an issue for Pierce County? And the city of River Falls?
We identified the Delta variant in the United States in the spring and we hoped that it could be contained or that it would naturally die out, as some other variants have. I realized in June that it was likely going to come to Pierce County and come July, we were fairly confident that it was here, although we did not have the sequencing abilities to prevent.
Do our lack of general surveillance abilities has hindered your ability to give to council? Certainly early warning, although are there possibly political considerations that have prevented you from providing the early warning? That could have been useful for the members of the council and the public as a whole?
So the thing about Delta is, it doesn't matter whether or not you have Delta or the previous wild strain of the virus. The public health actions and the clinical actions that we take would be exactly the same. I think that the public was well aware of the threat based on national news. And yes, because we did not have sequencing, we do not know exactly when the Delta variant arrived in Pierce County. The state lab of hygiene sequences a very limited number of samples from every county and every hospital. We have yet to actually sequence cases of the Delta variant, but we've had less than 20 Pierce County cases sequenced by the, by the state lab of hygiene since January.
There's been some modeling done regarding expected infections in students that I've seen in other states and areas of what we can expect out of this wave of the pandemic. Have you looked at any of that modeling? And if so, what would be a reasonable expectation under varying conditions for rates of infection in our students now with this wave? Now, K-12.
So I am familiar with several models that demonstrate what might happen in the next couple of months. I think it's, it's really difficult to say because there are so many variables. So it depends on vaccination levels in that age group, seroprevalence for those that have been recently naturally infected with the virus and might still have some immunity. And it depends on the policy level decisions that our school board stakeholders make regarding that close contact tracing and symptom exclusion. I am very concerned because what we are seeing right now is higher case levels than we saw this time last year, right before school started. And that is indicated to me that we have not built up the type of immunity that we need as a community to protect our schools this fall. So I, you know, it's way above my pay grade to know exactly what's going to happen in schools in the United States this fall. What I can say is that if we don't take proper mitigation measures now, we are going to have outbreaks in schools.
As a member of the council, you bring up power mitigation techniques. What possible mitigation techniques could members of the council or the sitting table to reduce the likelihood of having to shut our schools down? Assuming that community transmission in the communities works its way into the schools, as many of those models that you discussed have also been shared.
So I, I'm a resident of River Falls, I spend a lot of my time walking up and down Main Street and masking is no longer the norm in our community. I think people have been lulled into a false sense of security with vaccines, whether or not they got one themselves. And I think we need to reinforce, as you're doing today, good masking etiquette. Think people are also forgetting that it's very, very important to stay home and get tested if they are sick or think they may have been exposed to COVID-19. So it's, I think it's resensitizing our community to the need to be cautious.
And to clarify the testing of your sec, we are seeing a significant portion of Delta transmission the two days prior to symptoms being brought in, are we had?
Yes, because Delta causes a significantly increased viral load, that means people will test positive, they will be replicating virus sooner in their incubation period than they would have with the previous wild strain.
And then the last question relates to N95. And you brought this up in the presentation that currently you're not recommending the use of the N95 mask and recommending that they be reserved for healthcare workers. Now, I bought this box from 3M, placed my order in the second week of this month. And this box was actually manufactured in January of this year. So this box has been sitting in a warehouse for eight months. At a time when we did not have widespread vaccine availability. And it could have saved lives in our community, in our nursing homes, and elsewhere. In addition, I have read that a large number of rapid tests were created by the company that made them because they might get it more. I understand that you were involved in public health, not in logistics and supply. But I'm assuming also that 3M, which produced this, doesn't operate under a last produced first out of the warehouse model, that it's the first one in, first one out. Which tells me that we've got 18 months of production of this particular model, which is not one used by healthcare workers, I may add, sitting in warehouses. What, in your experience, is the difference in safety for individuals who have again had an entire mask taken versus you've been caught masking? And why are we recommending those for healthcare persons?
So let me start with maybe explaining how we test for N95 fit in a healthcare setting. So every single year, healthcare workers and public health workers who can be exposed to viruses and bacteria are fitted for N95 masks. And we're fitted for specific models, and models don't always fit everybody. Sometimes we have to go through three or four different types of models before we can find fits for people. Additionally, people with beards or maybe facial deformities can't be tested for N95s at all. And we actually put these hoods over our head and spray this very bitter spray into the hood to test whether or not we really have a seal. So that's where N95s are really very protective, is if you can get a good fit. It would be very difficult to test the general public to ensure that they really were getting the maximum amount of protection for an N95. Additionally, N95s are very uncomfortable. I mean, I, you, you might have an opinion, I find them very uncomfortable. After an eight-hour wear of a very well-fitting N95, I have deep marks in my face. And so if we can't get the public to wear cloth-based masks and cervical masks, I, I don't think that compliance with N95 needs to be very high. I can't speak to supply, I, I don't work in that industry. I do know that during the height of the pandemic and during several subsequent waves, we did have a little bit of N95s, especially for long-term care facilities and nursing homes, as well as the equipment that we needed to actually test those workers. I, I want to briefly respond to your, your question about rapid tests. So I'm assuming that these were rapid antigen tests. We do have those widely available in the state of Wisconsin. They have a fairly limited public health approved use. So we have found, based on studies from the CDC in partnership with the University of Wisconsin, that if you take statistically five sick people and they had all tested positive for COVID-19, or see, they all tested negative for COVID-19 using a rapid test, one of them would actually have been positive.
So a false, a false negative rate is approximately 15%, 20%?
Yes, so we need to be cautious when we think about using those rapid tests alone. They really need to be accompanied with follow-up PCR testing, which, when, when that's indicated, because that's far more reliable of a test.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and answers on these topics.
Mr. Pearson?
Oh, hey, I'm Nelson. So, Dean? Yes, first, thank you for being here, and I'm sorry you're here too. You mentioned Governor Evers having an incentive for people to get their first COVID shot from Labor Day. And I know that there have been other municipalities and states that have offered incentives. Do you have any opinion as to whether or not those are effective in saying, you know, increasing a vaccination rate of the 18 to 25-year-old population?
That's a, it's a really great question. And the answer is, we don't have the scientific background to know whether or not, in this particular case, incentives are going to be effective with that age group. What we do know from behavioral economics and from health incentives that have been used in the past, for instance, tax incentives on sugar-based beverages. We do know that incentives and reverse incentives can be effective in promoting health behaviors. They have to be the right type of incentive, so something that speaks to that particular population, and it has to be the right amount of incentive. I think where the $100 is potentially going to be really helpful is not with those that are resistant, but those that are indifferent. So looking at our younger populations who don't necessarily perceive a higher risk for themselves personally, who may not be opposed to getting the COVID-19 vaccine, but may need that extra little bunch to get there. It's also, I think, important that any incentive scheme take into account barriers that the target population might face. So for instance, we're very concerned about the UWR population, making sure that they have access to vaccines. And we will be coming on campus twice next week to provide vaccines for students. And I think the timing of that incentive program for students who are in that target age group where $100 for someone who's indifferent might really change their minds. So we're, we're hoping that that, that that is effective.
Thank you.
From the upcoming fall with students, are you planning, students, I'm just tapping K-12, are you planning? Because I agree with you, there's a difference between vaccine hesitancy, vaccine apathy, and then true, like, anti-vaccination stances. Are there things that Pierce County Health is planning to do for the River Falls School District additionally beyond Labor Day? Are we, are there more things that are coming your way?
So we have made it clear to superintendents and school boards that anytime they want public help back in the building with vaccines, we'll be there. So we've done several rounds of vaccine clinics, including with Pfizer vaccine at local school districts, including River Falls. If they want us to come back when we do flu vaccines in the fall, we're more than happy to come back. We have shared messaging with the schools and will continue to do so about the benefits of receiving the COVID-19 vaccine specifically targeted at parents of those children. I do know that some loud voices in the River Falls community have made sharing that information very painful for the school district. And so, you know, they have to be ever thoughtful about how they share that information with.
Mr. Carroll? First of all, excuse me, I have a bit of a thing going on, so apologies. I want to thank you for being here, I also want to thank you just for your service over the past, you know, 18-plus consumers. I know you've been a recipient of a lot of unpleasant mail and other things. And so I just want to publicly thank you for giving medical advice and trying to give us good public opinion, regardless of political winds that should have changed. On second, I'm not saying I'm vaccinated, I have been voted through the county, around Marlin and Ellsworth, and it went really well. And just thank you for the efforts that you've done to make vaccinations easy. I don't think anyone has an excuse for not having a vaccine because they couldn't get one. And I think I deserve all credit for that. I guess the only question or thought I have is, are there synergies where we can promote? Because when I think of what Governor Embers does, I don't think that gets over our side of the state very easily. So many of our students at UWR are coming from the Twin Cities. Is there a way that we can leverage that $100 that the state's putting out there and just make sure everyone goes about it? Either it's a mailer from the county or from the city, are there any thoughts to try to encourage them? Or also some of our community events, maybe trying to just do a couple more rounds of vaccinations to see if we can remove that 18 to 24 group? The good news with all this, too, is that our seniors are vaccinated. So with Delta, I think we'll see high cases, but I'm not sure we're going to see the deck of outcomes. That's good, but the high cases still have consequences and health consequences, I don't want to minimize those either. So my question just goes back to, are there available synergies we can have to try to take the governor's announcement, use it for, but thank you.
I have also noticed that the media on this side of the state has not picked up that announcement. We will be sharing the press release with members of the local media that we have as contacts in hopes that they share it. We'll also be shortly doing a press release regarding the FDA approval of the Pfizer vaccine, and we'll be mentioning that incentive. I've worked closely with Mary on your communications team and I would, I would ask her to use all her networks to share information about the incentive that she feels appropriate. I, you know, I think a lot more people listen to their, their city elected officials than maybe listen to their local public health officials at this point. So as much of an advocate as you can be to get people who might be on the fence there for $100, please, please do so.
Mr. Dallin?
You have a very difficult job. Thank you for all that you do. And my question for you is, to what capacity are you working with private employers in our community to develop virus mitigation within the workplace?
That's a great question. So last year, when COVID really hit Pierce County, we developed a business operations toolkit that was available on our website and through listserv for any private or public employer to take a look at, to understand best practices, not only for their customers, but also for their employees. So it went through everything from how to lay out your space to engage in social distancing, to how to know when to send an employee home to go get tested. We did get some really positive feedback on that and have updated it several times. We also work very closely with a state program that is confidential, so I don't even know if a business uses it, that they can come in and help businesses for no cost develop risk mitigation plans that are very, very detailed, to take into consideration best public health practices, as well as OSHA requirements. That's through the state occupational health program, I've referred several employers to them. And as I said, I don't even know the results of that because it's that confidential. We also work very closely through our environmental health team with all licensed facilities in the county. So we license any food, recreation camps to make sure that they have all the information that they need to handle a case and prevent cases in our business. I also regularly present to the chambers, including here in River Falls, about what's going on in the community, what the latest guidance is, as well as sharing answers to people that ask questions.
One follow-up question, are you properly funded enough to be able to help or work with those employers if they ask for help?
Um, no, I, public health has never been properly funded, not even close. So I think sometimes people in our community think of public health as this giant organization with endless resources. There are 13 of us. 13 permanent staff members. I have two environmental health staff members who are desperately trying to do the inspections that they're required to do, while also providing a business liaison role to any businesses that might have questions. You know, I don't have a chief of staff, I don't have an assistant, it's kind of just me trying to get out there and get that message out there. And public health agencies in Wisconsin have been left in the dust as far as funding for decades. And we were never staffed in the last few decades to deal with a pandemic like this. So we're trying our best, but no, no public health department in the state of Wisconsin staffed or something like that.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everybody. I've got just one kind of quick question, sort of a preamble a little bit. When this initially started, my question was, how are we going to, as a community that's divided by two counties, work in concert so that we don't have one mandate in south of Division Street and one mandate north of Division Street? And to my disappointment, that didn't happen. And I'm not blaming you or the St. Croix County folks, I know that there's other dynamics at play there. But what steps have taken place as we, if, as we swing back into the concerns over the Delta variant? What steps are taking place to make sure that we make a more united front on a regional basis, as was initially laid out to the council that weren't there the first time?
I wish I had a satisfactory answer for you. I, I don't, I think frankly, decisions that have been made at the state level have tied up the health officer's hands in a way that we could never have imagined. And because we have different communicable disease ordinances in the different counties, we have different authority. And it was, the state statute was never designed to require that. But unfortunately, the Supreme Court did not take up plain language reading in their decision and, and made a, like, very difficult for local health officers. Unless we have the same corporate council and the same county boards and the same communicable disease ordinance, we, we probably won't arrive at the same answers 100% of the time, and I don't have a solution for that.
What things can you do and the St. Croix County Health Department do in concert with each other? That you can, what can you do together? You know, if there's, if there's 100% of agreement, is there 85% agreement? And 18 different things are coming at this? It's frustrating as a council, it's frustrating as a community for us to, to have to, you know, look at Division Street as a divisive geographic boundary inside our, inside, inside our community.
Yeah, I completely understand your frustration and I share it. I will tell you that Kelly and I speak for an hour every day at the beginning of every weekday, and we speak regularly throughout the day. We are constantly coordinated. We most of the time agree on our guidance from a scientific perspective. When we do release guidance, we often do so as a region. But when it comes to mandates and enforcement, that's where it is very difficult to reach agreement. And at the end of the day, I am always willing to do what I think is right for my county, even if St. Croix can't.
Alright, I thank you for your time. And yeah, I think it was kind of mentioned up here, it's not an easy position to be in in the last 18 months. But thank you very much for the support. I know Assistant City Administrator Stroud, he's, he's had a good, good line of communication. We appreciate that as a city.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is a public hearing, it's a resolution approving the vacation or discontinuance of a portion of East Park Street and Sycamore Street right away in the AF heart conditions in the city of River Falls. So we will close the city council meeting and open up a public hearing on this topic. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? In the public hearing? Mr. Pierce, he's here, there's nothing there? Here to answer questions? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and open up. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and open up the council meeting. We'll start with a motion and this item, just as background, is covered in items, it is a one memo that's covered items three, eight, and nine, I believe. But because this is a public hearing, we will just be approving item number three right now that's covering that memo. So moving for a motion.
Mr. Council President, I can approve for the resolution approving vacation of portions of East Park Street, Sycamore Street, right away, and the A F Hart Edition in the city of River Falls.
Second, any conversation? Um, I'll struggle.
Would it be appropriate to approve the other related agenda items?
I don't believe so, no. I think we have to take them as they come later on. Otherwise, I would.
Mr. Simpson, this is the point of information, which I think is up in your favor of project that this is related to. You may want to withhold your approval of the vacation on the streets.
Do you have anything else? Okay. Mr. Clerk, you've got first and second. Go ahead.
First by Downing, second by Flunkett, to approve the resolutions. All in favor?
Aye. Right. We're on to the consent agenda. Uh, first item number four, acknowledge the following minutes. River Falls Park and Recreational Advisory Board from July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. River Falls Housing Authority, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Utility Advisory Board from July nineteenth, twenty-one. West Central Wisconsin BioSalads Facility, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Library Board from June seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Plant Commission from June twenty-first, twenty-one. Bid Board from July thirteenth of twenty-one. Historic Preservation Commission from July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Number five is a resolution approving the application for exemption from county library tax. Adopting this resolution would authorize an application for exemption from the county library tax. Number six is a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six capital improvement plan. Adopting the resolution would approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six capital improvement plan. Resolution approving release of utility easements located on blocks two and three of A F Hart's Edition, six hundred and seven hundred South Main Street. Adopting this resolution would release two utility easements located in blocks two and three of A F Hart's Edition. Anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to call consent agenda item number six.
Okay, Downing, let's call six. Anybody else?
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent agenda items four, eight, through H, five, and seven.
Okay.
Motion by O T, second by Beers, to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye. Okay. That passed. Mr. Downing, the goal number six, approving the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-six capital improvement plan.
I have some questions that I put our city administrator Scott Simpson regarding the capital improvement plan. So there are first one. Could you explain the process of how and why have blueprints for our fire station where it's proven from our current capital improvement?
I understand the question correctly. Current capital plan does not include the development of detailed plans with next step for any fire station. The rationale for that not being included was a matter of prior decision. So I've had a number of building projects in the community, successful, you know, investments in the community projects. At this time, based on our fiscal plan and the debt load that the councils previously talked about taking on, fire station falls outside this this round of cap.
Thank you for answering that. So I have another question. How long does it take to do a blueprint for a fire station?
Uh, I guess I don't know, later, not expertly. Going through a process in which you include the fire staff, facilities maintenance, and other people that will be involved in taking care of that building. Typically, those processes are anywhere from six to twelve months to develop.
So my third question is, is the council allowed to allocate future federal money contingent if they wanted to for something like this? If they wanted to, I'm not suggesting we necessarily do. But would we be able to make motions in the capital improvement plan contention on that one? That is possible?
You would. The council has the ability to approve projects in the capital plan and identify any funding source they think is most appropriate. So there are projects already in this capital plan which count on success of staff and the community or our partners in federal, county, state, and others. So certainly, this plan is subject to council amendment as you see appropriate. So you could, for example, in your, you could add the fire station in, add a set amount for planning and design, and identify the funding source as a grant or donations or what, or general, if that was appropriate. Obviously, the big caution is as we previewed, I previously answered, that funding perspective, if it's counting as something within our fiscal plan, meaning a local source of funding, it'd be challenging to meet your benchmarks for debt service and other things.
Thank you. You know, for me, this would make a lot of sense if we were to use the federal funding to do it, and I'll explain why. Essentially, it'd be a combination of capital improvement with a TIP project in the downtown in the future. I think that'd be part of, you know, the discussion of what responsible spending could be and what it should be. But because we no longer, you know, our, our fire department is waiting for our help to get a plan so that it has an fire station. The more we spend on keeping the current building that has ceiling problems, the more we lose out, not just on that building, but the potential, the potential to gain there, bringing money back to our tax rolls as a city. Certainly, the fire department needs and deserves a new fire station. To get to that point, though, we have to be able to incorporate the timing and planning on what we could do on the capital improvement, like, which would be best for our city. I believe the sooner the better. So we get the blueprints done, the time they manage to connect with creating a potential TIP district, which I would call TIP twenty-three potentially, before, during the downtown plan. Another reason for that allocation is the downtown would be good for another capital improvement and return into workforce housing, making two capital improvements that would save us money and put onto the tax rolls where the currently, where there currently is not. By doing so, a person could argue that doing the sooner pays for itself. Money would be reimbursed by the TIP that would come from federal spending once we got over a period of time. Since we lose the money, there's nothing coming back from the taxing currently. That would make a big win for our city and everyone who lives here. Stabilizing housing in its own right, saving money, stimulating the downtown, providing housing, which we all know is a strategic priority, helping our fire department have a much needed upgrade for a fire station. When we are planning the future of capital improvements, we could call it TIP twenty-three, and I've incorporated it into part of our future downtown planning capital improvements. So my last question would be, Mr. Simpson. Wouldn't be the soonest time if we were to actually plan something like this and incorporate it into a downtown plan?
I think that's a difficult question for me to answer. If it was separate, if you separated those two questions, in other words, if you said, what's as soon as we can put planning, design, and a new fire station, I'd say that's up to the council, I mean, from a practical standpoint. If the council said, this is a number one priority, unless we want it done, that likely could be done in a month from now, we could have a complete process. When you, when you add the downtown plan into it, meaning we want to have some kind of holistic look at what the the fire, the current fire station would be under our current planning horizon, assuming you want to continue with the county plan by competitive arc. The downtown plan isn't even in line until twenty twenty. So in my mind, you're really talking about twenty-four, twenty-five to have a plan that includes some fire reviews. That doesn't mean if opportunity doesn't present, so I don't know, you didn't ask this, ask this part of the question, but if you put it right here, it, it doesn't preclude us from being opportunistic if the opportunity arises. However, your adoption of the capital plan as full does signal to staff, I think in the right way, that it has to be almost an offer too good to be true for us to pivot and focus on a new fire station and a redevelopment of existing fire station. Again, if there is a specific federal program that only funds new fire stations and does it at a hundred percent with no match and is readily available, you may have to have that conversation as a council. But short of that, if you don't amend the plan as you're suggesting, the fire station is not a priority. Maintain the current fire station, continue to support it with resources, but we don't get to a new fire station for more than five years.
Would you say that the capacity for the city staff to be currently to, all to incorporate, the blueprint and the blueprints in this cycle?
I would say unless you have other projects that you could identify for us, your whole staff might identify them, the less the priority, then the current list is, is more than adequate to keep us very busy.
Well, thank you for answering my questions. I knew this was a strategic priority, but I also understand that staff have so much capacity. And I think it's something I think we all care about. Maybe we'll look at it here and now again.
Sure. I think the only thing I would like to add, Mr. Downing, is that I'm in the construction business. We do a lot of planning and building. I think doing the plans four or five years in advance is going to be a potential waste of time because a lot of things are going to change. Materials and practices and all sorts of things from now until we actually can build the building. So I'd be a little reluctant for us to get two-part, you have a plan, something that we're not even sure when, if, and when we're going to build it.
I would agree with that, too. Makes a lot of sense. I do think it's good that we're having a conversation about the potential of the future of that bill. Because it's, I think it's a healthy opportunity, so.
So it sounds like we're having a discussion. Mr. Downing's got a question. Should we get a motion and a second on the table before we have more discussion?
Sure.
And Mr. Downing, motion for, second by Mr. Beers, if you can.
I'm going to admit that I didn't read it word for word, the one that you sent out last Thursday. I didn't see much difference between the workshop capital improvement plan and the one that you sent us on Thursday. That being, and so my question is, at the end of the workshop for the capital improvement plan in August, July, maybe? At the end of it, three or four of the council members had concerns about the downtown not being addressed in this plan. If I'm understanding you right, we're looking at another five or six years where we're kind of taking that kind of revitalization efforts of the downtown down the road. Was that addressed, or what are the differences between the original workshop one and the one that was given to us? And I will fully admit, I did not read it word for word.
I'm supposed to admit that?
I'm sorry.
That's what I like about local politicians is.
So Mr. Stroud is here. He can speak to any changes. I, I don't recall substantial changes regarding the downtown planning efforts. Before I misspeak, I should let the government spend working in the spreadsheet over and over again. I think the short answer is, we didn't find any great ways to push a whole bunch of new projects in after the workshop, essentially. We, we certainly had some staff. There were some staff projects, and there's a couple of things that we think, oh, we forgot to put that in, or this project was already approved, or they possibly got to move that. But I don't think there was substantial changes.
There, and I, and I called them out in your memo, but I'll just call them out again. In addition to maybe some behind the scenes funding source shifting, I pulled out a property acquisition project. Essentially, because you're going to be talking about, staff is looking at doing that perhaps sooner than twenty twenty-two. And, and then a space needs assessment for the library was added. And, and I felt free to add it because it's a hundred percent funded by donations, and they have a donor for that. Other than that, there was nothing else I did or take away.
I'm sorry, to the question, Councilor Miller, on the timing of the downtown. Do you, do you recall how we treated that in the CIP?
If you stall for me for a minute, I might go ahead and follow. Do you have another question?
Um, my, I want to ask you just to come in your operating center. I'll always predict something.
So, so I guess I would remind the council as we talk to the workshop that it is a five-year CIP. It is a plan. It does get changed. We do revisit it every two years. So you will see that, you will go kind of through this exercise in two years. But then meanwhile, staff's preparing essentially the ten-year plan behind the scenes. So, so looking at this five-year window and then the subsequent five-year window. And, and I think essentially on a very quick, you know, on-the-spot search. I think we have the downtown kind of improvements currently slated in the twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight to twenty thirty timeframe. And if I recall correctly, I think what's been coming to me is when my colleagues were trying to get my attention in the back of the room at the workshops. And we even if wanted to do things quicker, there, there's contingency, different workflows and different grant cycles and different projects that kind of have to come first. And so we'd be really pressed to kind of do that sooner.
That's part of my follow-up. So I don't crunch the numbers for the city. So this is, you know, one of those things that I think would be helpful, especially for new council people. I really respected the way that the staff and city administrator brought forward, you know, staff time and the ability to do these plans with finality and to do all the projects that are there. Knowing that we're a city that's in relatively good financial standing, one thing that I think would be helpful is if the council does want to do more projects than that are currently on the CIP. I think it would be helpful for us to know if the current volume of staff can't do it, and we of course want to be respectful of their time, what would that take and how much would that cost in order to add staff to specifically look at these projects? And so for me, I think going forward, it would be very helpful for me to have that information so that I can make that, like, calculated decision. Is this worth, you know, adding more staff, doing more? Because I think that's something that we could look at and would like to if we're really looking at priorities and things like that. So.
I think for me, with my limited experience in, in assistant city administrator role, this is the type of answer I'd get myself in trouble with. It's where I'd offer you my wish list and staff's wish list, list on their behalf, so I can defer to city administrator Simpson.
Yeah, so, so it is true that if money were no object, we could potentially get more done. It's also true that even if money was no object, there, it's not just a staff capacity issue, it's a community capacity issue. And what I mean by that is, you heard a little bit, and you may have heard in the presentations this evening from the planning consultants on the county plan, is there is some engagement fatigue, right? And so if you're, if there's twenty-seven things going on in the community and the city sending a survey on each one of those. Now, there's plenty of people in town who are like, great, right, I'll answer all twenty-seven of those surveys, so I'm happy to give you my opinion. That's not true for most people who live in River Falls. They, they have, so, so we're talking about trying to build momentum for the county plan to get people's attention because we think it's vital that they participate. So even, so I just want to sound really caution, I guess it's in. Money is, money and staff time even aren't always the, the limiting factor for us to get more done. It is true. But I do think it's probably difficult for us to quantify that for you. I'd say anecdotally, we're on the top end, meaning we feel like staff. I'd say anecdotally, we're on the top end, meaning we feel like staff are getting. Lots of resources and lots of financial support to get lots of projects done, we're probably at. We could. We would mostly hear from council, they want to pare things back because they don't want to spend as much money as we are spending today. That's anecdotally my my being here for ten years. Because I don't think money has necessarily kept us from doing things. It's mostly because, again, if we do a fire station, we're going to want to get some input from the. Community and so they've got these other things going on and you get their attention. Um, but I think that's something we'd want to bring up. In future. CIP projects is, you know, what what are we doing as far as exhausting our ability to to do that? Um, just like we had feedback from Councilmember Downing, which I think will use. As we go forward and putting a timeline together for CIP, one of the things I think we're missing, um, or we missed for sure with COVID. Um, kind of messing up our schedule on CIP. We didn't have a formal reach out to each of the committees. And advisory boards, so. In two years when we do this, we want to make sure that we. Have some time where it goes out to those boards and committees, they have a chance to pass that thing. Now, that doesn't mean they didn't get to submit things, it just means there wasn't like a formal. Here's your opportunity to bring it back to us. Uh, and then the council can consider it, so we want to give you more feedback from them and we want to think about. How the council can turn the dials up and down on projects. Because there's. There's a. Seems like a limitless amount of good things we could do. Projects, I mean, there hasn't been much disagreement, and the fire stations are really an example, there isn't much disagreement that we believe that as a community, we should have a new fire station. It's a matter of. Can we get it done and it was a process work? The downtown is the same, the downtown is a little bit more complicated because we're dealing with. Federal and state agencies as far as permitting and seen recently on projects. That require our partners to work fast, but they are not. So even if you gave us more resources to get a project done, if it requires a state. By land permit. It isn't getting done on our timeline, it's getting done on the state's timeline, so. That's a long answer to say, we'd love to have more money, that's probably, why not? That's not the limiting factor, I think, at this point.
Any any other questions? That's because you called it, thank you, thank you. I've got sort of a bunch that I think are are just worthwhile to go through here. Uh, some of which have already been covered in the workshop, but I think. Uh, having done their bulk, we is worthwhile. Uh, looking at the ambulance building on page one and two. Furnace replacement, AC replacements and replacing shingles on there. Do we have a a long-term plan for keeping that building or is that something that? And I understand currently have a lease with the lineup on that, is that a long-term lease or is it something that the city is? Probably not going to be interested in the property management business for long-term loans.
Jason might be the best answer, but we have short-term leases, I consider short-term leases at five years. I'm not convinced we would want to be in the long-term business, but um, I think we're not investing in it like we're going to have it for nine hundred years. Is that accurate?
I think that is accurate and and the the project funds that were put in here are are essentially planning for the worst. Hoping for the best and and I think it's it's if they were submitted on the assumption of of a typical length of service life. And so we could plan accordingly, certainly we don't hope, we hope to not have to expend those funds. But we do have an obligation to, if we still have a active, you know, tenant, that we have to maintain the process for.
Okay, thank you very much on that one. Uh, next one, we've got, well, to page five, the. It's two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for the dry pipe string for bike pedestrians building. What's going on with that one?
I have to pull up my individual project notes.
No, that's okay. For the rest of the council, too, there's a link in your packet on there. I think it says link to the full plan here, click on that and go right into the bigger document. So drive, drive fires, wrinkly piping is to be replaced in the annex pieces. So that's not the whole system, I think. Let's see, well, at the time of replacement, it would be about fifteen years. The time of plan replacement, I'd say. There again, we won't replace it just because the money is available, but plan in twenty twenty-five. Based based on the regulatory requirement or or having service.
Is that a poor issue or? I mean, it may be that that's something that they just.
I I think we can get you a better answer, but it won't be at this this council session, but certainly we can. We've got more to tell.
For me, looking at, you know, I I still feel like we have the new car cell in this building. Sort of a major public investment, looking at replacing a pretty high-ticket. Piece of the infrastructure and then. I'd like to know more about that myself. Power plant roof wall protection, I believe it was, that was a. Insurance issue was raised in that one, was there, is my memory correct?
I think your memory is correct, that was called out in an assessment some probably years ago. And I believe, I wasn't in this position at the time, but if I recall the information I was provided correctly. The city had a firm committee do an assessment of all our buildings to to look at us up and. To be quite honest with you, it's something we probably kicked down the, a can we kicked down the road, um, a little longer than we should have. And because there are active kind of work efforts up on that, up in that space from time to time, that it was a recommendation from that firm.
And that's on the building that we have no plans for, that's likely that each one now. That's not a section of the knowledge plan, but the historical preservation committee or what else has expressed interest in?
My reflection is this is the, this is over the. The the powerhouse of the portion of the power plant that sticks all over the hydro. Oh, there's a little catwalk that they have to walk out to get on to access that. And there's a hatch then to get down through to the generator, and that's my reflection that. There's concern about access to the hatches going out. That, you know, basically you're falling down to the.
Okay, I thought that was the nineteen eighty section.
No, this wouldn't be on the roof.
Okay.
This is, I mean, it said, it talks about. Power plant roof, but I believe I read that report, it's. It's the catwalk out to the, and that's why we delayed is because there was the suggestion that. We've been doing hydro operations for decades that way. This point, we felt there's not active use of that. They have a safety review for a reason that that we should go ahead and make that investment.
Thank you. Uh, page thirty-three here, we've got. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. Uh, trail acquisition, right away. Do we have a breakdown of that? How many acres are we getting out of those two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Where is that going within the, it seems like a pretty big ticket.
So I'm not sure I have the page numbers up in front of me, do you see a project number of the time you could read me?
I don't know, it's the project number twenty-one, C D zero zero two. Yeah, there's the the page subset in here, yeah, somewhere around nineteen and to that or something, it'll lead to the page numbers.
Page thirty-three of the plan.
Yeah, so that, so I was just wanting, I wanted to make sure that I get any additional notes to that. Power acquisition or easement to extend the White Tail Ridge mountain bike, mountain bike trails south. Reach commercial noted, Tattersall, all this funding may also be used to assist Cork with trail consulting and that, um. Yeah, I I think, um. The only additional note I have is just that it brings an extension of the trail system to Tattersall.
So we're not sure, excuse me, we're not sure, um, council member, what the ultimate land acquisition might be, anything that. Negotiated, coming back to the council for approval, but we're working on an option that will look at extension. Cork has got kind of a. I think they call it a master plan. To connect the trails back to what would have been the shop with property. Now would be the Tattersall property, and so in the course of doing stormwater and other things in that area with private land owners and. Kind of looking at trail access acquisition, this. This was included in that tid, so the funding source is the tid for Tattersall. Twenty-two would be the earliest that we would execute this project, I think that's. That's unlikely to be done in twenty-two, it gives us the option to do that if. Land availability is then price and things line up.
So it's a bit of a placeholder.
I would say roughly, yeah, roughly speaking, we're talking about pretty significant level of easement. Because you're talking about roughly where the water tower is going to be placed. On the top of White Tail. Kind of down some way back to what we consider kind of the commercial area and connect with. The bike path, bike path path on Paulson, so people could kind of connect all the way back down through downtown to. Which I think some of us will. Event it up better in our bike and pad plan. Um, process, and so that might give us a better idea exactly what we. We got parallel processes here. As usual.
Page forty-nine, we've got the ten thousand dollars for the electric vehicle charger. Capital, which is coming from private donations to divert all of the other pages. Uh, twenty-one M U dollar one. The public electric vehicle charging for a level-two charger. Interesting. As we're looking at that. Does the city currently have any electric vehicles in our fleet, is that something that? You would look at long-term or is this something that's really going to be solely for? Somebody that has their own Tesla that comes into town and blow on juice and doesn't want to use a hundred and ten volt level one charger?
Yeah, my understanding of this project is this is primarily for the public. Your example is not necessarily for the city to charge its vehicles. And that's why they still have to do is kind of an evaluation of exactly what's the right spot, so we talked about. Osnes Park Parking Lot, Heritage Park Parking Lot, City Hall. Post, I mean, post up, there's a number of locations that these chargers could be located. So far, it doesn't seem like it's catching on at the private locations. So to speak. Um, and this is a. If I recall correctly, this is a specific program. It's been worked on by W P P I and others to try to. Sprinkle a few more of these within the state of Wisconsin.
And that's correct, and and to the latter part of your question. I this, in this CIP, we did not include any plans to to procure any additional electric city vehicles. I I think it's fair to say that's something I think we'll probably continue to assess and analyze in in the years ahead.
Oh, yes, I just, that's the number of Chevy that is electric. Uh, I think there are going to be, um, especially with federal incentives, I think there are going to be more and more electric vehicles and River Falls to be friendly to them. I think it's going to have to be a very big deal.
Are we going to be subsidizing that with tax dollars from other people so that the wealthy folks that can afford a new electric vehicle will get free charging at its electric stations? Or is this something that there will be a fee associated with it so that? Uh, the ratepayers are of M U or whoever is paying for the juice. Uh, it's not subsidizing, you know, well, you know, to have their own electricity.
Yeah, I won't speak to the subsidy, but the mechanism of funding is likely to be a combination of these ratepayers. Powerful choices is the source, um, that's identified, which is part of the rate, um, payers. I don't know that they have a good methodology for revenue recovery, but we certainly will consider that. But I would suspect that as a default, this would be seen as a demonstration slash amenity. Without regard to who we, who in fact uses it, but.
Free take the gas for the people to get one on a regular basis.
I believe I have. Try this.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Yeah, then I'll go to the same, because I have trailer replacement on page seventy-four. We're looking at. Fifty-six hundred feet approximately of replacement. Project cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that going to be typical of what we're going to be looking at for cost on trail replacement, uh, or new trail construction elsewhere?
I don't, I don't think we have a good prediction on the long-term, you know, increase in petroleum or other things that might impact that, that's our best. Best thought based on the current prices extrapolated out to twenty twenty-three, so most of these dollars are what I consider in today's dollars. When we update this every two or three years, then we kind of update it to the current prices, so if you see something in twenty twenty-six, we've done. A reasonable estimate, but I wouldn't say that we've done, you know, present, net present value, so. We think in twenty twenty-three, a hundred and fifty thousand, is it is going to be enough to do this particular fifty-six hundred feet trail? Which has, you know, a reasonable base and water issues and. But no retaining laws that I can think of, so there, so. Yes, it's a reasonable. You could use this math on other projects in twenty twenty-three, assuming these are mostly.
Thank you very much, no further questions when I hear you all. Anybody else have anything? All right, uh, we've got a first and a second, uh, we have the first.
First by Don, then a second by Mr. Beerstap.
Well, we got an ordinance and resolutions, uh, next we'll take up resolution creating tax increment district eighteen approving. This approving plan, approving its product logic, project plan. And establishing its boundaries in the city of River Falls, Wisconsin. Adopting this resolution creates in our tax increment district eighteen. I do believe Sean Lens is on the line or can be on the line or. Something if we need to ask him from Hellers. We're looking for a motion here.
Mr. President, approved for resolution creating tax increment to the district number eighteen, approving its project by establishing its boundaries in the city of River Falls, Wisconsin.
Second. Second for Carol, okay, any discussion? Right here and now, I'll turn to the clerk.
First by Don and a second by Carol to move for resolution.
All right, I asked this. Number nine is resolution approving specific implementation plan for the seven hundred South Main Street. Project adopting this resolution would approve the specific implementation plan for seven hundred South Main.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution approving specific implementation plan for seven hundred South Main.
Basically second. All right, um, I'll turn to the clerk for the, oh, any discussion? Discussion?
First by here, second by O D, on the favorable solution.
All right, moving on to the next, uh, resolution approving developers agreement for seven hundred South Main Street. Adopting the resolution would prove the development agreement for seven hundred South Main Street.
Mr. President, I move for a proposal of the resolution agreement with development agreement for seven hundred South Main Street.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
First by Odean, second by Downing, to approve the resolution.
All right, moving on to the reports, we have the control report, Mr. Dean.
Um, we do, this is the controller's report for July 2021. General revenue, general revenues ended July were $6,262,659 or 55% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in the month of July include $307,000 in shared revenue, Wisconsin state aid, and $121,426 in expenditure restraint payments. Expenditures for the state period were $7,154,948 or 62% of budgeted expenses. Expenditures for the period include $12,000 in advances to TID 15 and 16. That expenditures over revenues for the period ending July 1, 2021 are $819,289.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we'll move into closed session, you recess in the closed session. Per state statute 19.851E for the following purposes. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to win River Falls Industrial Park Lot A, we pushing the second of the call here.
President, move with moving.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, I'll turn over the clerk for the vote.
First by Beers, second by Odean. Session, start the roll call a little, we're simply.
I.
Odean. Carol.
I.
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 All right. All right, we're in closed session.